So now I will call to order the meeting of the regular North Hampton School Committee meeting on February 14, 2019. I'm not going to ask for a roll call because we had that in our previous meeting and I don't see that we've lost a quorum. And so then I would open it up for the public comment period. And anyone who wishes to make a public comment could step forward. I don't know if we, if anyone has signed up. Mr. Harrell, are you? Okay, please, step up.
I'll let you sign yourself.
Okay. So if you could just, if you could just state your name and address for the record and I will, I will have a timer set for three minutes. And whenever you're ready, the floor is yours.
That camera's a side view. My name is Steve Harrell and I live at 51 West Farms Road. In 1980, I founded Harrell's Ice Cream and though retired now, over that time, I employed about 700 young people and many were students at North Hampton High School. Tonight, I'd like to give you a brief history of time, of the start time, that is, of that school, which is currently 7:30 a.m., and to remind you about events of the last 10 years. For those of you who may not be aware, there's been a lot of serious reputable research regarding teen sleep and school start times, which, if too early, are detrimental to students' health, academic performance, and safety. You can easily find a wealth of this information online. One main point is that during sleep, our brains absorb and remember what we learned the day before. With insufficient sleep, we don't learn as well. Teens are not getting the sleep they need and an early school start time contributes to this problem. Teenagers are driven by an internal biological clock and these circadian rhythms make it difficult for them to fall asleep generally before 11:00 p.m. and difficult to arise before 8:00 a.m. Serious discussion of the start time in North Hampton commenced in 2008. Much concern was focused on the school buses. To save money, we use the same set of buses to transport all three levels of students, one after the other, in tiers. To provide for a later high school start, more buses would have to be added at an increased cost. Of course, a later start time makes for a later end time, too. How might this affect athletics? In 2012, an ad hoc committee was formed to study this and all other implementation issues. In their final report, this committee explained actually how little would be the actual effect on sports. So in June of 2013, the school committee passed a resolution with a vote of seven to two to implement a later start time by September 2014. This resolution was later rescinded because no one, because no one was sure just how much extra buses would cost. Superintendent Provost did some serious work and in February of 2015, he stated that a later start would increase the annual bus expenses by $91,000. This amounts to about one quarter of 1% of the then budget. Still, no further real action has ever been taken on this important issue since that time. Meanwhile, a year ago September, the start time was made later in the entire public school system of Seattle, Washington, and as a result, both grades and test scores Tonight, I just wanted to remind you of some of these things and to not let this issue completely wither on the vine. It's still an important and active issue in much of the country. If anyone is interested in picking up on this issue, feel free to contact me. My name is Steve and my number is (413) 727-8188. Or you can leave a note at Harrell's Ice Cream. And thanks to all you committee members for such, for all the hard work you do. I think we appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Steve. We appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during the public comment this evening? Okay, hearing none. Are there any announcements from members of the school committee?
I just wanted to make the rest of the committee aware of an opportunity that exists to have a voice in the MIAA. So I've been serving, this is my second year as the MIAA basketball rep. And while a lot of what we do is minutia, voting on shot clocks and choosing a tournament, official tournament ball and all that, there are some pretty serious issues of equity and access and budget implications that come up during the work on these committees. There's also a question of gender equity on the committee. I have 23 male colleagues and only three female colleagues on the committee, which makes it interesting when there are issues of gender equity that come up related to sports. I feel like I have to fight particularly hard. So anyway, the MAS C is allowed to have one representative on each of the MIAA sports boards and there are currently seats that are unfilled. And I do think it's important that we have a voice and I think that we can make a difference in addressing some of these issues. So if anyone's interested, the MAS C will send out, I think next month or the month after, sort of an invitation to sign up for any of those committees. And they only meet three times a year at Franklin, Massachusetts, which is far, I understand, and they do reimburse you for travel expenses. So I just thought I'd put out the call to see if we could get some more representation on some of these boards because I think it does make a difference.
Thank you. Anyone else have any announcements? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to recommended actions. We do have a consent agenda this evening that consists of the minutes of the Rules and Policy Meeting of October 4, 2018, school committee meeting minutes of September 26, 2018, school committee meeting minutes of October 11, 2018, and the school committee meeting minutes of the January 10, 2019 meeting. We also have several field trip approvals. I think one of them will be pulled, right? Oh, okay. So we're actually pulling, we're going to be pulling the Rules and Policy Meeting Minutes of October 4 and we're going to pull the Leeds Elementary Grade 1 trip to Symphony Hall in Springfield because neither of those actually are ready for a vote and one doesn't require a vote. Actually, the committee one doesn't require a vote anymore. And the Springfield trip doesn't require a vote. So those are actually just sort of, shouldn't be on there. So we also, we do have the NHS Coed Varsity Wrestling trip, February 15 through the 16th to Methuen High School in Methuen, Mass. We have the NHS Coed Varsity Wrestling trip to February 22nd, 23rd, 2019 to St. John's High School in Danvers, Mass. We have the NHS Girls Ultimate Frisbee trip, April 13th to the 14th to Shelburne Fieldhouse in Shelburne, Vermont. The NHS Senior Class of 2019 trip to High Meadows on May 22, 2019 in North Granby, Connecticut. Then the NHS Robotics Team, March 8th and 9th, 2019 to Willby High School in Waterbury, Connecticut. The NHS Robotics Team, March 22nd and 23rd, 2019 to Bryant University in Smithfield, Rhode Island. And the NHS Indoor Track Team, February 27, 2019 to the Reggie Lewis Center in Roxbury, Mass. And then we have a budget transfer, Student Services for Translation of $55,660. So would someone make a motion? But again, we'll be removing the first set of minutes and the first field trip, not to vote on separately, but just they don't actually require a vote at the school committee.
Move to approve the consent agenda minus the two items mentioned by the mayor.
Is there a second?
I'd like to remove the meetings from Thursday, October 11th because I have a correction to offer to them.
Okay. So that one is removed. Any other? Could you second the motion then with that?
And I'll second the motion.
Okay. So then the, the vote will be on approving the consent agenda minus the October 4 Rules and Policy Meeting Minutes, the October 11 School Committee Meeting Minutes, and the Leeds Elementary Trip to Springfield Symphony Hall. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So now we'll move to the minutes of October 11, 2018. And Ms. Voss, you wanted to make a, make a motion to approve with a correction.
Yeah. So the correction I'd like to make the motion for relates to the public comment period. It's labeled as E and it reads Eli Marlin and Izzy Donley, both students at North Hampton High School, spoke about issues with integrated math at JFK in the high school and in favor of the proposed math study. They presented the mayor and the committee with signatures of the petition to support the proposed math study. And what needs to be corrected is the petition that they presented was not, had nothing to do with the proposed math study. I'm not, I don't recall what they said about the proposed math study, but this, the petition was...
For integrated math.
For integ, it asked, it asked high school students to sign a petition asking North Hampton Public Schools to reevaluate math curriculum. And it was signed by 226 students and I believe it was in June. So it was long before the consultant was ever proposed. So anyway, that, I'd like that corrected, please.
Okay. So is there, um, did you catch that?
I will change it from petition to support the proposed math study to petition to reevaluate the math curriculum. Does that work?
That works. And, and you know, I think, I think we were gonna, somebody was gonna share that with the school committee at some point. So it's good we came back to that. Okay, thanks.
Okay. So there's a motion made to approve those October 8, October 11 minutes with that amendment. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Excellent. Thank you for catching that. The next item on the agenda are our reports and recommendations. And so the first among them is a report from our student representative, Michael Diaz.
Good evening. Just want to start off by thanking you for allowing my colleagues to come and present to you earlier. It means a lot to us. First item on my report is an update on our school's track teams. Western Mass Finals were recently held. Girls' track, after going undefeated in their regular season, did lose by one point in their championship and will rank second in Western Mass, which is still a great achievement, while the boys' track did win their championship. In other sports-related championship news, NHS senior Jordan Vandergriff won third overall at the Western Mass/Central Swimming and Diving Championship, was beat out by two central divers. So she is, for this year, the best diver in Western Mass. So congratulations to her. We've discussed this before, but the Town Hall meeting, which is sponsored by a large number of social justice clubs, including NHS Democrats, Environmental Club, et cetera, that will be held tomorrow at the high school at 6:00 p.m. with our new representatives. There's a new, there's an independent group at the high school that is starting a textbook lending library, which is in order to lend textbooks, specifically Smith textbooks, to high school students that are participating in Smith class. That way, they don't have to go out and purchase them, whether it's because they're only using it for one class or because they can't afford them, just making those resources available to all students, not just the ones that can't afford it. So that way, they are allowed to, are accessed to take Smith classes. Speaking of Smith classes, second semester is up and running and a lot of students are in the middle of it all. The student union has made, printed, and posted a series of posters up around the school that are sort of infographs discussing the epidemic that is vaping in our high school. They are currently working on what ways can we, as a representative body, combat that or at least inform their classmates about the dangers and the effects of certain actions. The junior class held a dance last weekend. They held their Cupid Shuffle. There were games and foods and of course, dancing at this dance. And the students that, that attended reported that they had a great time. And finally, there were auditions for North Hampton High School's Theater Department, their spring production of the play Snow Angel. Auditions and callbacks were this week and the cast list is to be posted tomorrow. And I'm sure the cast, whoever it is, is going to be excited to work in that production. And that's all I have for you guys this month. Thanks for having me.
Thank you so much, Michael. We appreciate that. Next, we have the 2019, 2020 school year NHS Program of Studies, which requires City Council to take a vote, the school committee, City Council, sorry, that's next week, vote of approval. And I now have Principal Lombardi come and present that to us.
So I believe it's been shared with you already and I think that your Rebecca will be happy that we put in blue the changes. So I think that should help you all. So I guess with that, since you all received a copy of that and it's clear what is new, I'll open it up to you. If there are any questions or concerns you have, what we see for our intended program of studies for our next school year.
Ms. Voss, next.
Thanks. It's always really fun to read it and see all the huge diversity of classes that are offered and they, I want to go back to high school and take some of them. I do have a few questions, I guess I always do, but I, I just have three questions, so I'll just go through them. Page 15, it, it's in blue. It says, "Students enrolled in an honors class may not withdraw from the course to take a Smith College class." And I could imagine why that might be in there, but I, I want to make sure it's, that we think it through and that I understand it. Why is it an honors course? So maybe you could help us understand it, but also, if you want to take a Smith College class, where I see the challenges, you have, you sign up for these high school classes, you might have emailed a professor at Smith and said, "I really want to take your class." And most likely, the response you get back as a high school student is, "That's great. If there's room, you can take it, but I'm not going to know if there's room until September." And so I don't know what students do in that case. They probably go enroll in a North Hampton High School class. So my, my question is, why can you drop non-honors classes to go take a Smith class? Which is what this, I think, is implying, but you can't drop an honors class.
Sure. It's not meant to imply that this class is better than that class, but we do find, we have found that when a student is interested in a Smith college, and you're correct, they won't know officially until the fall. We register for classes in the spring. We make decisions on what we're going to run, how much staffing we're going to put for certain subjects as well. What we have found in the past is issues with running classes of eight P R honors, which tend to be single 10 or double classes, not as much as a classic, an English 9, which we have 10 sections. Typically, a class might be one or two sections. And what we've found is that we've made decisions in the spring about how many sections and staffing. We get to the fall when we have Smith and all of a sudden, those numbers go down to a number that would have made us question, was that the wise decision for our staff in the number of sections? And we found that usually impacts the honors and the AP levels. So we said, we can't have that because we need to be cautious in making sure we're using our resources as best as possible.
So what does a student do who wants to take a Smith class and doesn't get in it, but is, you know, trying to take something at a high level? Like, what do you recommend if a student comes to you? This policy...
It's, you know, it's, it's hard and I've been here for, I've been here for a while and we have struggled with this for a while because in one sense, we want to honor those students that have opportunities for Smith. Typically, if you're doing a dual enrollment at GCC or HCC, it's a little more clear whether they're in or not. So it's really hard to hold a spot in a class where you, you want to make sure they have access to as rigorous classes we have or arts or things like that. We don't really have an answer because they really don't know until the fall. But at the same sense, as in building principle, I need to make sure that we're making decisions on what class sizes and what teachers are teaching. And we have yet to find a specific answer because we don't, it all hinges upon Smith and what they're able to say to us. So that is, I don't have, we have yet to find an easy answer that says you can be guaranteed this class or this class you can drop out of, lift drop or another. It really is complicated. You know...
Can I ask a question from the subject?
Sure.
I know you have more questions, you said. But so how often does it happen or what was the, what's the shift here? What did you used to do? What is this changing to and how often?
We've started this probably about two years ago. We found again that we were running some, classes with really low numbers and we didn't find that to be appropriate when we had other classes that had high numbers. So maybe at an AP, I can't go back to the specific class, but we've been noticing patterns of having classes of, you know, 12, 13.
So a low number because a student started in the class and then left to take a Smith class?
It was high.
High.
Maybe vision based on this is appropriate amount of instructors to have for this course or this is, this is the appropriate amount of offerings.
Right.
And then come the fall, when we're kind of noticing we're maybe have high numbers somewhere else and we're looking at our, our classes and will notice, well geez, this class is now lower because students have withdrawn over the last five days for Smith.
Because they didn't in the fall say what they were going to take a Smith class in the, I mean, in the spring, take it in the fall.
They don't know what, they don't know if they're in that class.
Right.
So they can tell us.
Yes. I'm familiar with that. Yeah.
And so when they registered, they registered for a North Hampton class.
Yeah.
And then they're in that class and they withdraw from that to meet their schedule at Smith.
Got it. So they can't decide at the beginning of a semester that they want to take a Smith class if they haven't, if they've already had another class in there?
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying...
No, you're not saying that.
No, what we're saying is that when you decide to take a Smith class.
Yes.
You know, you should talk to your guidance counselor and the class that you're going to drop to take that, we're letting them know that it can't be honors or advanced because those tend to be, you know, single 10, maybe a double 10 class that we have to really make hard decisions. Is that a class of, you know, one class of 32 or maybe two of 16? Okay, we'll do two of 16 and then all of a sudden, you're maybe running two of 12.
Right.
Or one of 16 and one of 10 and it's like, well geez, that could have been one class and that teacher could have gone somewhere else. But once the school year starts, you can't really shuffle teachers and schedules around.
Right. Got it. Thank you.
So Ms. Voss, you have a follow-up on the same topic or did you have a follow-up?
I was just a clarification on this same topic. So this has been your policy as far as AP classes, right?
Yes.
It's only the honors classes that you're adding to this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Maybe I'll just clarify one thing because I'm understanding it better. So if a student wants to take a Smith class, their best bet is to just not schedule another advanced class they want to be taking at the high school during that time slot and then they can, if they don't get in the Smith class, they obviously have to take something at the high school.
Yeah.
And maybe they'll even get in an honors class if they're through, but they just can't commit to it.
Unfortunately...
Is that a fair way to say it?
Yeah. It's, it allows us to have more access to the resources and decision-making and that's why we do that.
Mr. Diaz.
Yeah, so I think, just to clarify, a student at the high school and who's currently enrolled in a Smith class, my experience has been that when we sign up for classes in the spring, that our guidance counselors make it clear, you know, we can't drop honors or AP, but we're still asked to select like an academic course to fill that slot. We still need to have eight credits enrolled. And we're allowed to leave a little memo at the bottom saying that I would like to drop this academic class for a Smith class. Obviously, we don't know if we get into the Smith class until later on. And although it's still a memo, does it seem like there's anything really binding to that desire to take a Smith class until the semester starts up? So it seems like it's still a little, really we have to wait until the Smith semester comes around. I hope that...
That helps. And is it problematic for students or is it fine?
I think some students might find it problematic just because at the spring, they have a desire to take a Smith class, you know, that semester in the fall. But there is nothing that really, aside from that memo, which isn't binding in any way, there's nothing that like, you do in the spring to really, to actually solidify that they want to take that class or isn't like a option to take a Smith class and then enroll. Like you have to officially enroll in the class before you can drop it, which I think some students might find frustrating because then they go back to their guidance counselor and say, "I want to take a Smith class." And like, oh, well, you signed up for poetry. You know, it's difficult to get like that binding commitment early on.
You could also do a double switch where you could have something as a placeholder. I know that's from my own family experience, but you could have a, you know, you put a placeholder in first period because you know you're going to try to take a morning Smith class. And then if the Smith class falls through, then you could also switch to another class, another academic class.
Well, then we don't necessarily know when class, like what high school class is going to be offered in the morning.
True.
Like that's not necessarily...
That's true.
I was fortunate enough that, at least from my experience, I was able to take a class that was offered at all four periods of the day that then depending on what my Smith class was, I'm able to drop that class whenever. And that just worked out really well for me, but that's not the case for most students.
True.
So I'm curious from a student perspective, is there a way this could be worded or thought of with a slightly, with a slight twist within what we're hearing? Are the issues that would be better from the student perspective or do you think this is the right way from a student perspective to handle it?
Well, I think I don't know a lot about what actually goes into scheduling.
Yeah.
I understand that that's a really complicated monster to deal with. What I think that I would like to suggest is maybe in the spring, give the student option to fill in as one of their credits, college course, whether it's Smith or GCC. I'm not sure how realistic that would be going forward, but maybe a way to actually solidify when they sign up for classes, that they have an intent to take a college class and then maybe give them the option if they don't get in to drop into one of the courses that are currently available. But I do understand that there are lots of scheduling conflicts that go into that.
I mean, where I'm coming from is, and I understand you want to be consistent with everyone, but if these kinds of things said something like, "Students enrolled in an honors class may normally not withdraw from the course," or some word in there, because right now, I'm aware of several honors and AP courses at the high school that have more than 30 students in them. And I would think that a student or two leaving some of those would be good for everybody. This course gets smaller, smaller for the teacher and the student gets what they want, a Smith class, which is just, is, you know, demanding in a sense. But I do understand you want to be consistent, but I just wonder if there, there might be a place to be a little flexible.
Again, I think it's hard. Once you, once you deviate once, then it, it just opens that door. And again, I think I can just say for past experience, we have found that to be, it's kind of like what Mayor Nakrul is saying, you know, the term placeholder. And at some point, you need to make a choice. And if, and if you want that Smith College class, I think it, then it's worth going for. It's rigorous. We support that. But the same sense, you know, when we're making other decisions, having a student say, "Well, I want to kind of have it, that placeholder with an AP course and hedge my bet. If I don't get that, I'll take the secondary." We don't think that's fair for decisions that we have to make that also impact other students as well. So we find that by being very clear upfront, we're happy with the results because we do find that we're able to use our resources better. And I'm not sure if that would necessarily alleviate the calculus class of 32. I can't say that's, I can't really draw that as a correlation. I think we have a lot of students who are interested in advanced coursework.
Did you have other questions?
Are we done with, are you going to keep? I have a couple other things on the handbook, but if it's this particular... No, no, it's on the handbook. I just, yeah. Something on the same page.
Okay, go for it.
So this is just a wording suggestion.
Sure.
And it's again in blue. These things I'm asking about are the blue thing.
Yep. Yep.
So it's about the wording for the advanced placement, the new policy and how it's worded. It says, although Northampton High School does not require students to take the AP exam, colleges may require the exam in order to possibly count as college credit. I think that's a little confusing, and I'd just offer a slight change, which would be something like, colleges usually require the AP exam to award college credit for the AP course.
Want to email me that?
I'd be happy to.
And bring that to people, and I can, my guidance.
That's fine. I'm happy to do that. And then, continuing that, when it talks about, students taking an AP course will be required to notify their teachers within the first three weeks of the start of the course, whether they will choose to take the college board exam, they will receive a form to complete designating their choice. I think that's fine, but I don't think it's the current practice. Maybe I'm wrong, but in my experience, that students weren't asked in the first three weeks to commit, it was much more recently, in January, and I just want to make sure what's happening is actually what's reflected here, so people aren't confused.
Yep.
And you can figure out that. And then I have one more question about it, but if people have a question on this page, I can wait my turn.
No.
Okay. My other question is much further down, and it's just, when I was reading about the special ed class offerings, and.
What page are you on?
I don't know.
Okay, I got special, okay, yep, I'm there.
Let me find it.
69, Special Education.
So I'm the school committee rep for this CPAC group, and I've been attending their meetings and listening to a lot of parents who have students in this class called Learning Strategies. And it, the way it's scheduled creates problems for family, for students who maybe don't need a whole day, a whole 80-minute, I guess, class. How many am I saying?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three minutes of Learning Strategies every day. And so there's been a lot of discussion about, can we be flexible so that some kids could do other things during the week, and maybe have Learning Strategies one, or two, or three days, and not five days? And so there were a lot of ideas put out, and it sounded like progress was being made, and there's no change in the handbook, so I just wanted to find out if, when we should expect there to be a change.
Sure.
And what's going on.
So currently, we have a high school team of special education teachers, administrators, as well as associate director of special education, and we're currently in the process right now of discussing what might be some other options, including strategies, but different. And so that's our process now. We're hoping to have this in place on these communications as part of our transition meetings with JFK, starting in March, that we, as well as our own IEP team meetings for, in place for next year.
So Learning Strategies is blue in here. It looks like it probably got changed, and I'm just.
Some of the verbiage, it used to be, Learning Strategy was always broken down by grade.
Okay.
Grade nine, 10, 11, 12, and we're trying to shift away from that as well. So this is trying to just encapsulate a very general description of what Learning Strategies is. Because of the time that we go to print for this and approval, we're not there yet to put in what might the other options be for that. And that's also not some, that would be some that you would register for, for courses. It would be something to be part of a team process.
Dr. Provost?
I would just like to amplify Mr. Lombardi's answer by saying that some of the models that his team is looking at would require change to contract language, and they have given me some model suggestions to communicate to the negotiating team when that process gets underway.
Okay, no, that's good. I think what's helpful for the community to know is you're working on it, and, I mean, I think a question they would want me to ask, so I'll ask, and I don't know if you can answer it, is there hope that by next fall, some students will be able to have a more flexible experience?
Yes.
In Learning Strategies?
Yes.
So you expect that?
We're very aware, and we've encouraged the community, that one-size-fits-all opportunity for student services is not the way to go. Do some students need it every day? Absolutely. But there's a lot of other areas we can go, and we're actively looking at that with our goal.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay. So Ms. Burnham?
I think, I think Mr. Kaufman actually was next.
Okay.
I'd first like to ask if my colleague is waiting for a natural break? You are? Okay. So, thank you, I did look at the program of studies, I particularly focused on the blue areas, so I just had a couple of comments or questions about that.
Sure.
But first, I just want to say that I do have an opportunity, as part of my work, to look at programs of studies throughout the state, and we just have a great program of studies. It's just well-written, your introduction is nice, I think it's, it's just, the array of courses that we offer is pretty amazing, and I've grown more and more impressed as I've looked at other districts, so I think it really reflects the community and the things that we value. So thank you for everybody for that. The parts in blue that I really stuck out this year, actually, I don't, I love the inclusion of the K-12 transfer goals, so thank you again, Dr. Chevers, for your work, and your team of teacher collaborators and contributors for that. I don't think that's in blue, but I think this is the first year we included it, isn't it? So having those, because it was done last year, and I think it was done after.
Done last year, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. I mean, I just think it's a great accomplishment, and just the fact that it's now becoming part of the fabric of what we talk about, and what's being transferred in terms of communication and stuff is great, and it, being in the program of studies is just another indicator of how I think it's going to continue to inform our vertical alignment of K-12, and it's great. So thank you. And I was also very impressed with the array of alternative education options, and many of those were in blue. I don't know whether they were rewritten, or they're actually new options, or whether they're just in a different place, and I don't want, I don't really need to know that now, I just want to say that it's, again, it's an impressive thing that we're offering alternative, and I don't know why we even call them alternative education options, so many of them are so rich and so great and so valuable, I wish every kid had to do a senior capstone, or was, you know, pushed to doing that, or taking child development. These are incredibly valuable skills, but the fact that we have those, again, really stands out as really, really nice for us as a community. Some real quick questions. I saw that there was a school-to-career position highlighted in blue, that wasn't there last year, so I didn't know whether that was just a re-titling of somebody who's position, whether it was a new position.
In the beginning, for Misha Begon, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yes, that's been here, that just used to be called our internship coordinator.
Okay.
I think we feel that school-to-career is a little more appropriate, what we're trying to do, we're trying to get students, not just internships, but a mindset for careers. So this used to be Donna Waterman's position, who was a part-time, again, work-study internship coordinator, and when she retired, Misha came on, and she is our part-time person in that role.
Yeah. No, I think I knew that. So it's not, it's not a revamped job description or job responsibilities, it's a different title.
Different title. And with the young lady that's come with, you know, more relevant, more contemporary experience with that, and so she's bringing some other elements to the program that wasn't there before. It's not, not a slam on fine work that Miss Waterman has done, but Misha has, you know, a newer experience with it, newer knowledge of that.
Yeah.
Bringing some elements to it that I think are bringing rigor, but as well as a career mindedness and a thoughtfulness about workforce and career connections.
Yeah, for sure. Great. Okay. And two more things. So one, I don't know if you know this, Dr. Provost, but I was, I have the understanding that the state is going to require more civics education. So is that just going to take place at the middle school, or is that something that we need to factor into high school graduation?
It's both.
Yes.
It will be, it will be taught in eighth grade, but that will require some adjustments to the high school history sequence. So you'll see that in the, the graduation requirements listed right now, there's a list of graduation requirements that doesn't comport with the current graduation policy. It's because it reflects the changes to the high school history sequence that the high school is recommending at this time. Of course, for that to really become effective, the graduation policy needs to change, and later on in the agenda, there's a request to refer the graduation policy to rules and, whatever it is.
Policies.
Rules and policies. Thank you.
All right. So.
So I can say in terms, yes, in terms of, the main instructional component will be in the eighth grade for civics, but for the high school, all students will be doing a civics project, which will be embedded within the curriculum.
So it won't be a separate course requirement, it will be a separate unit within a required course?
Yep.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And then the last thing, this is something I brought up before, I know you and I have talked about it, and I just want to revisit it again, which is, I think there's still confusion around the policy for how students advance in math, and whether there's options to take a pre-course assessment to test out of a class, for example, and particularly as students are moving from eighth grade to ninth grade. And I don't know whether the program of studies is necessarily the place to put that. I don't know what you distribute when you talk to eighth graders, but it seemed like a logical place. And my concern that I had a couple of months ago that I raised was just that I spoke to students and teachers, yourself and some other administrators, and I kind of got different answers as to what options are available to students when they move from eighth grade to ninth grade. So it ranged from whether they went to a private school, a public school, whether they could test out, whether they had taken a course at the high school while they were at JFK, and whether they needed it, and whether they didn't need it. And it all made sense to me, but the problem was that I was hearing different answers from everybody, and so I think, I'm just wondering whether we do have a policy on that, what options are available, and if so, is there a plan in place to ensure that everyone knows what it is and understands it, particularly as you introduced the options to the middle school kids?
Yeah, and when you say a policy on what, I forget the words you just used, policy on.
I think it's, what I'm looking for is what options students could take in ninth grade math.
Can I just say, because you do state for foreign languages, for instance, if you took a year of this, go into this class. If you took two years, if you're coming from another school, you need to speak with, to be assessed, but we don't do it for math.
Yeah.
So I think he's discussing, like, where is your natural placement, depending on where you come from?
Yeah.
And so if the, if the policy is that everyone goes into IM1, then that should be stated somewhere.
Okay.
So do we have a policy, Mr. Lombardi?
Yes. So students, when they come up from JFK, are placed into IM1. And then when students are there, if students are, within the first week, teachers will be doing pre-assessment, engaging students, and if teachers at that point identify students are presenting content mastery that's making them question, are they in the right course, then they can make a recommendation for them to either go up or down, depending on where their, their skill level is. And that's, that's the same thing in world language as well. Students that come from schools outside of Northampton, we go by their transcript. We take a look at their transcript, what is this and there, and that sometimes might mean a conversation with someone from another school to explain what math, and then the department chair will make a determination based on what they're seeing from that transcript.
Yeah. And so if, you said during the first week, a teacher notices, can a student also make that request? I'm wondering if they feel like, I looked at syllabus, I talked to the teacher, I whizzed this first week, can they also make the request to test out?
We wouldn't call it test out. I would have them speak to the teacher, and it's what we're going to see from, again, them doing pre-assessment, whatever work they're doing in the class, and things like that.
Okay. So I don't want to debate the policy, actually, I just want to make sure that that's well-known. So I think Mrs. Fallon's idea that it's, like other courses, it's inconsistent, but if we included that, I think it would be helpful. There's already a section in math that says recommended courses, so it's just starting in 10th grade. And more importantly, I think, if it's not, if it's not, if this needs to be published soon for your trips to JFK, just to ensure that that's the information that's shared, because I did hear that that isn't necessarily clear to the kids at JFK as they're selecting math, that would go a long way to helping alleviate my concern, and I think helping kids make a good selection.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Can I comment on that?
Sure. Sounds like we've got.
If you want to make a comment or a question, that's fine. Well, I just kind of want to, I mean, I think it's, consistency is an important question in this case, because we say, on the one hand, you have to switch classes within three days, so that, that decision about what's the appropriate level of math for you is really important. My understanding is that there's one IM1 teacher that gives a pre-assessment in that first day or two, and moves kids up or down accordingly, but the other teachers don't. So I don't get a feeling that there's a consistency across the IM1 teachers about how we're treating kids who are coming in, and that there is a problem with a lack of equal access to information of what it takes to move, so.
All right. Thank you. I'll bring that back. I can talk with department chair and deal with these issues.
Okay. Thanks.
Dr. Provost, and then, sure.
Just to speak to that, that very question, again, I'll go back to some of our findings from the district review process. I'll say that since the final meeting where the sub, where the full committee discussed math study, there've been a number of meetings between the high school math department chair and middle school math department chair, sometimes different constellations of administrators at those. I can say that one of the topics among that has been having consistency among teachers in their decision-making. We haven't really figured out exactly what the process for that would be, but it wouldn't surprise me if there were some inconsistencies in the way those ninth-grade teachers are making their decisions, and so we want to try to work on that.
That's great. Great to hear. Thank you.
Who's last? Did you have a?
Yeah, I think I'd just like to share, to add to what my colleagues are saying, and it is very important to be transparent for families into how we place kids in math in ninth grade, just like with the languages. I think that's a great example. And the reality is, kids are different in math when they come into ninth grade, and we do have at least one teacher giving tests right now. I've had parents contact me to ask, what is this? How, what do you do as a parent? Just people in the community. And you get a really different answer, depending on who you ask, who you, you know, what, how loud you're willing to bark as a parent, you get, you get treated differently, from what I can tell. I know the students have brought up, if you come from a private school versus a public school, you have different options in how you place into math, and I think we need to be very transparent. And in this case, I'd really advise against making it one-size-fits-all, that we need to treat all the kids the same, and give everybody the same opportunities to be placed in the appropriate math course, however you all want to do that. When all of this changed, now, close to five years ago, you can go read the Gazette article. We used to have a reporter from the Gazette sitting here, and I've reread them recently after people have brought this to me. They all say, we're making changes in math, and there's going to be a test given before, some sort of placement available if you want to take it, so you can be put in the appropriate math class. And that's, that's what was said five years ago. So I think this is a really important topic, and we do need to be consistent, and maybe it doesn't make it into the handbook this year, but it certainly should be made transparent to the families.
Sure. No, I agree with you.
Okay. Ms. Burnham, you're next.
Thank you so much. Places that I was so excited to see were these new computer classes that are going to be offered, so exciting, and I really loved the section on the English language education, which was, you know, addressing a big population that we have, and it was, it's really, really great to see those additions. see those additions. And the only thing that I was going to ask is on page, the school counseling department page, which is page nine, we clarify on page eight that it's, that there, we say, school counselors and school adjustment counselors. And then down, we say the role of school counselor, and then we have the language, the guidance counselor. And I just would love for us to unify the guidance counselor in all of those spots when it's the guidance as opposed to school adjustment counselor.
So I can bring that back. So guidance, so school guidance counselors, as we would all refer to them, now the terminology is school counselor. And, and so they, so we actually had, so they prefer themselves as, were school counselors. And they kind of want to shift that way, but they also realize people aren't aware. So that's why they put the guidance in that one to...
I wonder if you just want to move it so it's the, the school counselor, you know, acts as guidance or guides the, I mean, if you're going to make the change, it feels really, it felt really like sticky and...
Okay.
As, you know, all of us come from a place of guidance and then to just see it once, I would, I would just see if there's a, you know, a softer landing. But it was really exciting to see the offerings. Thank you.
Ms. Bisansky.
So I just had one quick question. The world language placement policy, which I, which is in blue, so I take it it's new. Has that changed? It used to be if you took a language at JFK, for two years, you went into the first level of a language. Now it looks like you're going into the second level of language. Just curious.
So this is new because it's new here.
Yep.
But in terms of where students are being placed after, at JFK to here, that, that part is not new. So if you did, when you did two languages here, yeah, when you did two, you would come into that part.
Got it.
We have not changed that.
You were just...
Yeah. We just added, this is new here, along the lines that Mr. Kaufman was bringing up, to have something transparent for people to see what the policy was.
Yep. Great. Thank you.
Ms. Fallon.
So, because I'm going to be asking the committee to refer the graduation requirement policy back to the subcommittee to discuss, can you just give us a little background on, under required course sequence for class of 2023 in history? It's the world history one or two courses will be required to be determined. Can you talk about the changes and, because we did change it in the...
Yes, we did. Yeah.
So...
So it came to our attention at some point over, over the fall that DESI was putting forth new requirements, new standards for history and recommendations of new standards for schools. Districts are allowed to implement that in terms of three classes or four classes. They are asking the standards for US one, two, world history one and two. So we need to confer, we're currently in the process of wrapping our heads around this, what are the standards, what are going to be our recommendations for courses? We're definitely going to be recommending a US one and two. We would like to have that in terms of US being beginning of the sequence for students, because when they come up from eighth grade, they're going to be having units on US and civics. So for that continuity, to have that at the high school level, so by the time they get to world history one, they would have the full gambit of all aspects of US history. What we're not certain about is to recommend three courses or four. We have to find out what we do with the remaining standards. Our concerns with having four, as we discussed previously, is what does that do to a student's schedule of having more required classes? It really locks them up. So those are things that we are going to be determining.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and this is also linked, there's potentially going to be down the road, a, a social studies, history, MCAS test. We're just not sure when that is coming as well.
Thanks.
Ms. Hennessy, you have a question?
So my, my industry.
Sure.
The only thing about this for me for next year's book, is that because we don't know what, the rules and policy, what the requirements of Northampton is going to be, the freshman class or the first year class next year, the class of 2023, this is, they're still reading this, and they will be taking world one. As ninth graders or no?
This is where we're all kind of things...
So the, the reason this, this information was put in there, even though it's not consistent with the policy, is that we want to signal to eighth graders that they should take US one. So they're, they will be the class of 2023 coming in, and the second line really applies to them. Obviously, it's going to have to require a great deal of counseling support, because it's confusing that we have something in here that's, that hasn't been come policy yet. But we want the eighth graders to take US one, not world one.
When, I was speaking to Karen Haddable today, she's the director of guidance, and we're talking, she does not feel this will be an issue, because when the counselors go down to assist the eighth graders in registration, they will most definitely be informed, you need to take a history. And we will put in the course registration for them, the corresponding ability to sign up for a history course, and by the time we navigate to where we need to navigate, we'll put that into the schedule. So she will actively, each counselor is fully aware of what they need to communicate, and when they get the registration sheets, what we'll have available to them will not be confusing for them.
I find this confusing. So, and I get it, it's only for one year, and that the changes will be super clear.
Yes.
But I'm not comfortable with that, but I have nothing else to say on that.
Yep. No, I agree, there's too many to be determined.
And are you, I'm sorry, one last part of this. And so you're going to start in 2023 with that graduating class, having the US one, two, modern world, not...
World history, not modern, yes. So next, next year's incoming will be part of this, everyone else. And it's kind of like you're just phasing one in, phasing one out, and we do have the staffing to do that.
Totally, yeah.
Yep.
Ms. Ross, and then Ms. Burnham, and then Ms. Bisansky.
Can you, I didn't know I had this question, but now I do. Can you talk about where there's going to be the offering of an honors version of these history classes?
Most likely, there would probably be an offering, and again, we haven't fleshed this out, but I would imagine would be along the lines of a US history two or world history, or maybe US history, they would have an opportunity for the AP. And those would be the parts that we would have to determine. Those have been things that have loosely been discussed.
So I think it's really important to not lose opportunity for students to take honors history.
Yep.
And if, about five years ago, we lost, students lost that opportunity to take honors history as part of whatever was required in the freshman year of high school, maybe it was six years ago.
So I would say, all, all freshman courses...
Yes.
Are designed for heterogeneous experience.
That's right.
But for, for the world history two, just like for chemistry, the second component, there is an honors level.
I just want to make sure when there's a new sequence, the second history course would be offered also at the honors level.
Yeah, we're fully aware of that. And yeah, we're having those discussions, because it might be actually AP. You know, we're trying to determine, well, a student, for example, right now typically AP, APUS, most students are taking that in their junior year. How many students are going to want to take APUS after going through two years of AP, of regular US and world history? We're concerned, so we are tossing about, you know, what we think is going to be the best way to offer advanced rigorous coursework, but also not kill something and not underserved. So definitely, it is part of our discussions.
Yeah, just to be clear, the track would be, the second history class would be an option to be at an advanced level, whatever that is.
Yes, we're currently, that is on our radar. Yes. Thanks, Mrs. Burnham.
And I was wondering, would it be clearer if it was like to be determined by DESI or something? I mean, this does feel...
We're determining it.
But we're, it's, so it has nothing, okay. I thought that you all were saying that if, if DESI changes it, that that's what...
No, we, we...
Okay. I misunderstood.
Yeah. We get to, they've set the standards that need to happen. We're the ones to determine how many courses, and we're the ones to determine to have honors or not. That's, that's not DESI, that's the school and school committee working together.
So, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Yeah, just one more quick thing. I think this year, we, school committee funded ASL for the first time?
Yes, American Sign.
And it looks like you're adding it next year?
And have ASL two.
ASL two, which is great. Is that, can you give us any indication on how popular that course was and how it went?
Yeah, so we probably, overall, I think right now, last semester, we ran the course with under 20. This semester, it's above 20, and we're getting, talking to the teacher, we feel it's pretty hot that students were going to have, you know, robust class sizes that will want to have a ASL one and two, with robust size, class sizes of about 20.
Yep.
Kids are excited, you know, you're finding a lot of kids are excited, and we also find that it's a, it's across all levels. So it really is one of those true experiences, that you have students with different abilities, different backgrounds. You know, it's a class, if you ever want to come by, I can bring you, it's a silent class.
Yeah.
I mean, it makes sense, if you think about sign language, but I mean, really, the instructor is also deaf, and so it is, again, it's the only class in the building. There is literally no talking at all. And I think the kids find it unnerving, but I think, in the same sense, some kids really like it, takes the pressure off. And we're seeing kids really come out of their shells. So it's a lot, a lot of real positive experience.
That should be the class, we make an exception on the cell phone policy, just to twist things up.
There you go, right? Yeah.
So do you know whether students take this in addition to another foreign language, or is this, I know they're allowed to just take this, right, to satisfy...
So right now, so right now, this is just an elective. We do not have, we do not have a world language as a requirement for graduation. And because this is only the first year offering ASL two, that's where the guidance counselors will have to do some research, how is that viewed at a college level for them to count that as two, two languages?
Yeah. I was also curious whether students are taking this in lieu of taking Spanish or Latin or French. Do they see it that way, or are they taking both?
I don't think that's, that's part of the narrative right now. I think it really depends where this, where this goes. Again, we're only, right now, ASL one for one year.
Right.
And so how many students right now are seeing that, unclear. I'm not sure if our guidance counselors right now would be steering them away from a world language to this, because I don't think they're, one, we have enough, technically, you're going to want to go beyond two years for, for many languages. And I don't think we're fully aware of how, what status, like that equal bill at universities as well.
Right.
When you compare to, you know, to a French or a Spanish, for example.
Right. We'll find out. I'm glad we supported it. I'm really thrilled to see we're adding another section.
Yeah.
More advanced. Good. Thank you.
Ms. Ross.
On the same page, we, we just had a really pretty spectacular presentation by students, members of student union about wellness. And so as a result of their presentation, it makes me curious, listed grade 10, 11, and 12. We heard a lot about grade nine, but activities and seminars related to wellness education. I wonder if you could just tell us for grades 10, 11, and 12, what that means and how flexible it is in terms of, is it the same every year, or is there some flexibility in it?
Sure. So right now, we just wrapped up our second year for grade, grade 11. What we're trying to do is get to a point with the relationships with community-based agencies and providers, that we could do the same thing every year. So for the freshman experience is doing a trip up to Berkshire East for zip lining, and they have an outdoor adventure park. And for the juniors this year, and this, we did a mountain day, we brought the whole junior class to Mount Tom, and we hiked up at Mount, Mount Tom. Those are our general activities that we do. We're working currently, right now, putting things together for the spring, which would be, again, Berkshire East. We're trying to put together whitewater rafting, but there's a lot of things we're working out in terms of the details. If students are unable or do not want to go, they're given an opportunity for an alternative assignment. It's a Google classroom that Mr. Derby presents to them.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry.
Anyone else have any other questions? Okay. So I feel like we vetted that pretty well. I need to have a motion.
Move to approve the 2019-20 Northampton High School program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Thank you so much. Principal Lombardi.
Ms. Ross, if you want to send me the...
Okay. So now we have a series of financial and donation-related requests. First off is a vote for a transfer of funds for NHS ESP. And this is, Dr. Provost will discuss this.
This is an ESP that was not included in the budget last year, because the student enrolled at Northampton High after the budget was passed. We fortunately were able to cover the position for the first half of the year with the ESP who runs the in-house suspension room, because we had a very good first semester in terms of low in-house suspensions. But at this point, we don't think that we can rely on that staff. Unfortunately, we do feel like there will be some in-house suspensions needed over the second half of the year. And so we're transferring funds from a tuition line item where we have less than anticipated expenses to the ESP account in order to create basically half the position. It's a full-time position, but only for the second half of the year.
Okay. Is there a motion to make that transfer?
Motion to approve the transfer of funds for the NHS ESP position.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next, we have some donations. First one is the Ultimate Frisbee Boosters, $1,500. Ms. Candy, do you want to speak to that?
Sure. So we received a $1,500 donation from the Ultimate Frisbee for the general expenses. The athletic director has asked the school committee to approve that gift.
Okay.
Motion to accept the donation, NHS Ultimate Frisbee, Frisbee Boosters in the amount of $1,500.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion about that? All those in favor of accepting this donation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next is a donation to RFK Fin Ryan Road PTO, and the PTO is making the donation 2,445 for projectors.
So the PTO has offered to give us a gift of $2,445 to buy five projectors. This was in lieu of last month, they wanted to buy some computers, so they would rather buy the projectors.
Okay. Motion to accept the donation from RFK Fin School PTO in the amount of $2,445 for projectors.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next is Bridge Street PTO making a donation, and I'll have Kami describe this one.
Sure. The Bridge Street PTO has offered a gift of $8,410 to purchase new playground equipment and materials. So there's imagination playground materials at $2,355.65. Flowers outside the music instrument, $3,200 approximately, and rainbow Sambo's outdoors drum for $2,754.
Motion to accept the donation from Bridge Street PTO in the amount of $8,410.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this one? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting the donation, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next is a nursing scholarship, $25,000. Kami, do you want to speak about this one?
Sure. We've been contacted by the attorney that's handling the estate for Mr. Berger. Part of his will has actually set up a perpetual scholarship in the amount of $25,000 for a nursing scholarship, and I've asked the school committee to accept that, so the treasurer would be authorized to set up that scholarship account.
Is there a motion?
Move to accept the donation, Carl W. Berger Nursing Scholarship in the amount of $25,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of this very generous scholarship, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. And finally, a, this is a donation by the NHS PTO for band instruments.
That's correct. The NHS PTO has offered a donation of $1,960 to purchase instruments for the high school band, $1,960.
Motion to accept the donation for NHS PTO band instruments in the amount of $1,960.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Just a quick note, there was about $40,000 worth of gifts from community and from various PTOs. Always amazed that the, not amazed by the generosity of this community to support education, so thank you, everyone.
So, because it is tax season, we now have a refund that we're going to vote on. This is a, this is a refund to the Northampton Association of School Employees, and it is the return of an unspent gift funds totaling $24,163.03. And I don't know if the superintendent or the business administrator is going to speak to this.
I will speak to it since I was here at the time when the gift was made. I will speak to it since I was here at the time when the gift was made. If you turn to the back of your sheet, you can see the accounting on the gifts. These were payments made to the school committee by NACE during the time when the full-time release presidency was in effect. There was a balance of $24,163.3 at the time the program came to an end. So, this return of funds would just close out the balance in that account.
Okay. Mr. Meyer?
Wait for a motion.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this refund? Gift refund?
Yes. Motion made.
Okay. Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Meyer?
So, I just want to point out something since I was present at the negotiations of the first two rounds of this agreement. Sometimes, when everybody knows something, information that's critical does not get included in the agreement. And I think that that happened in this case. I think it's going to result in us refunding $6,195 more than we really should be if we were honoring the intent of the parties. During the first year of this release, due to the late hiring of their placement teacher, we had $24,000 roughly more in the gift account at the end of that fiscal year. I believe that the intent of the parties was to leave that money in the gift account to be applied to the release going forward of the president. You can look, and I don't think there's any correspondence or any requests of a refund of that money at the end of the first year. Also, if you look at the agreement in year two, the district agreed to accept $49,323, which was less than the amount that we had paid, or the rate at which we had paid the teacher for the previous year. It also makes no provision for benefits, which the replacement teacher had not taken in the first year, but in negotiating, we had no assurance of that. And it also made no allowance for unemployment costs, which was always something in the school committee's mind when we went forward with this agreement, was that if the arrangement ever ended, the replacement teacher would have to be compensated with unemployment benefits if they were not able to obtain employment. The operative language that unfortunately was not expanded was in paragraph 1B, "In the event that the salary of the replacement teacher exceeds $232, the committee will bear the additional cost." I believe the mistake was made in communication between the school committee and administrative personnel that bearing the administrative cost should have resulted in a deduction of the $6,195 from that gift account. Unfortunately, it didn't happen. And at this point, I'm going to vote for this motion tonight, not because I believe the amount is the amount that was agreed to, but because the litigation costs, if we were to litigate this with some ambiguity, would probably amount to $5,000 very quickly. So, it's a strategic vote. Again, I think it's unfortunate, but I think if there's any dispute about the money going forward, I just want to make it clear that I feel that we are refunding an amount that is significantly in excess of what we should be refunding.
Anyone have any other comments about this? Okay. So, there's a motion that's been made and seconded to issue this refund of gift funds in the amount of $24,163.3. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, that is approved. The next item on the agenda is a vote for emergency impact aid assistance for homeless children in the amount of $2775. Ms. Lamica?
So, that was a grant that we had applied for, that we received those funds, so it is actually a grant fund for a total of $2775.
Okay. So, we'll be accepting these grant funds, then? Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the emergency impact aid assistance for homeless children in the amount of $2,775.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. All those in favor of accepting that grant, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next, we have a vote. This is at the request of Ms. Busansky, and this is a vote to invite State Senator Joe Commerford and Representative, State Representative Lindsey Sabadosa to speak to the school committee. Did you want to describe that? It's pretty, oh.
Should I vote? Do you want to vote? I don't.
I don't think it's a paid speaking appearance.
It's not. I didn't know if it would be misconstrued as mean.
You could certainly abstain to be just whatever, to be on the air on the side of caution. I, but.
And we'll move to pay, have her pay.
Okay. That's fine. Yes. Should have had her on Valentine's Day, so you would at least be.
I know. It could be the guy.
Day night. So, but, Ms. Busansky.
Well, I mean, I do realize some of us get to talk to Senator Commerford more than others of us at the Capitol.
Not on this side.
So, the idea.
Sam?
When I attended the Mask Day on the Hill and talking to some other school committee members, that they have their state legislators come and speak once, at least once a year, if not twice a year. And I think we have a real opportunity with our new legislative team to start this tradition. And I think we all know that they're working on the education reform issue, and I think it could just possibly strengthen our partnership to that end. So, I'm bringing it before you for a vote, for your approval.
Okay. So, would you like to make that motion, then?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to invite Senator Commerford and Representative Sabadosa to speak at the school committee, at an upcoming school committee meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any one opposed? Any abstentions?
No.
Okay. Okay. So, we will extend that invitation on behalf of the school committee. Thank you very much. All those in favor? And then, okay. Yeah, fine. We'll extend that. So, it passed nearly unanimously with one extension. Next, we have a vote to approve a job description, I believe, for a garden classroom coordinator. And I'll have Dr. Provost talk about that.
In your packet, you have the job description for garden classroom coordinator. This position has been filled through a contract that was supported by NEF. This was a recurring NEF grant. I believe that the grant was in existence for at least six years. The last time it was renewed, the understanding was that FY '20 would be the year in which NEF expected the district to be ready to take on the garden program as a sustainable funding source, or a sustainable program within its budget. So, this job description is prepared in anticipation that we may have more flexibility if we're able to fill the position through Unit A, as opposed to continuing the contract. Of course, if no one applies, we could still continue the contract. So, this is, it proposed as part of our plan to take the garden program fully under the school budget.
Okay. Is Burnham, she have a question?
Can I say that I think this is very exciting, that we are moving toward really saying that this is a part of our values and a part of our schools?
Could you channel that excitement?
I'd like to make the motion to move garden classroom coordinator.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Kaufman?
Dr. Provost, how come you, at this point, haven't included, like, numbers of hours a week or pay? Is it just premature at this point to do that, or is there a strategy behind that?
There's no strategy around that, other than the fact that we are still busily at work on the budget.
Yeah.
I think that the hours would be comparable to the hours that are covered in the contract right now. Not sure how many hours that is, but I think it's less than, less than full-time.
The way this reads, I thought this was for a teacher at each school to take on some additional responsibility, but no?
It's not a teacher for each school. It would be shared staff. We're not adding forward positions for garden classroom coordinator. We are adding one. Am I wrong about that?
I thought it was an existing person who took on some additional responsibilities, couple hours a week or something, at each of the schools. But that's the way, that's the way it read to me, but what?
Yeah. It does read that way.
We hadn't determined, talking with the principals, we hadn't determined whether it was going to be one person to cover all, or it would be someone appointed at each one of the schools for a smaller amount. We're trying to work that piece out in between the budget piece and what needs to be done. So, we hadn't decided that it was going to be a position that was on the list that we had.
But this is just to approve the job description, and then, obviously, the budget would spell out what type of an FTE it is, or how many FTEs it would be?
Okay. So, but just by the fact that this is a faculty member, this is a teacher A position, as opposed to a full-time, non-professional position? Right?
It is Unit A, yes.
Yeah. Okay. So, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Fosse?
So, I actually had a similar question. It wasn't clear to me if this was an add-on in hours, kind of like coaching a sports team, where teachers at the individual elementary schools might help with the garden at each school versus a half-to-full-time employee district-wide. And so, while I think it's a wonderful thing that we have these gardens, for me, that piece needs to be better understood, I think, as part of a job description, and also just talking about priorities. For example, we don't have librarians and other things like that. Where does this fit in? Are there ways to maintain these gardens in a meaningful way, use them as a classroom without hiring a full-time teacher district-wide, and it's for 12 months? And I don't know the answers to those.
So, I think that we'll be able to clarify some of that through the budget presentation. I do know that the principals feel strongly that this position is needed in order to maintain the garden program going forward, and have committed significant funds from their own cost centers to do it.
Just if it's a Unit A employee, will we need to negotiate an MOA for the summertime, since their report period is the school year?
Well, since the whole contract is up for negotiation, I think it could be embedded within the agreement.
I'd have to think of that, though.
So, I don't recall if there's been a motion yet to approve the job description.
Molly did.
Okay. It's right. Enthusiasm. Okay. It's been seconded. So, Ms. Busansky, you had a question?
So, will we get another version of this? You said it'd still be sort of being sorted out, whether it's going to be one person or four. The way it reads now, it seems more like.
So, the job description clarifies, if I may.
Sure.
The job description clarifies the duties that whoever is doing this, or however many people are doing this, have to fulfill. And then, through the budget process, we'll be able to give you more clarity on whether it's one person, whether it's two people, whether it's an add-on, whether it's a separate thing. Right now, this work, as I said, is being performed by a contractor, so we're trying to figure out what the transition looks like. But we want to have at least the essential job requirements spelled out.
And I just wasn't clear. So, it will be a full-time position, or it'll just be additional hours to somebody's current job?
So, I think that, again, that's something we need to work out.
I see.
There's a 12-month component to this, so that may limit our ability to recruit people. I think it may well be in additional hours that someone who's currently working in the school does, but I don't have the answer to that question at this time.
Thanks.
But you're not committing to that by voting for this. You're just committing.
And I'm very excited that we're doing this, by the way. I want to show my enthusiasm for incorporating the school garden. I know that teachers, NEF has backed this for years longer. They made an exception longer than anything else, and I'm really excited that this is a missing piece to it, but I think it's great.
Okay. So, there has been a motion made and seconded to approve this job description. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, now we have a report. This is from our colleague, Ms. Fallon, on her recent trip to Washington, D.C. for the National School Board Council Committee, or something like that.
It's going to be the Laura Fallon Show next hour.
I will try to make it quick. So, it was the National School Boards Association, who was the Federal Advocacy Institute in Washington, D.C. And as a member of their federal relations network, I was able to attend. Some of the things that we talked about were, for instance, last, in December now, Congress passed the 2018 Farm Bill legalizing the use of CBD, one of hemp's byproducts, at the federal level, and the implications that that's going to have at the state level. So, it's the first piece of federal legislation that was legalizing hemp and removing its DEA Schedule I Controlled Substance Label. And so, they were talking about what other states have done to, at this point, as far as policy around medical marijuana use in schools. Typically, right now, we've got policies, even in the states where it's legal, you aren't allowed to publicly consume it, and so, it's not been allowed in schools. But as of last month, I think it was just, yeah, just in January alone, Colorado, Delaware, Florida, Illinois, Maine, New Jersey, Oklahoma, Pennsylvania, Washington, and West Virginia, all passed laws or policies allowing specific uses on school grounds with parameters in place. And so, it was really interesting to see how other states are approaching this issue, and where we could head ourselves. Another seminar that I went to, and something that we advocated for very strongly with our Congress congressional representatives, was the Higher Education Act is about to be reauthorized, and really talking about how we could use this reauthorization process to strengthen and build the educator workforce, and really make sure that we are keeping in place, that we're using the opportunity to strengthen our teacher preparation programs, and that we're keeping in place loan forgiveness programs that will, that districts rely on to attract quality educators to the workforce and to retain them. And then, another issue that we discussed was, that I brought up at the joint committee meeting, was the 2020 census. And they were really talking about the importance of getting a complete count, and how that will impact funding in all other areas of our lives, and what we as school committee members can be doing to make sure that we're doing outreach, so that people understand the importance of filling out the census. The hard, one of the most undercounted groups is children up to nine years old, and they talked about all of the reasons why, and the barriers to participation, and how we could be helpful in trying to do outreach in those areas. So, I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that. But the big push was, and I think this is so important, is the Individuals with Disability Education Act was passed in 1975. It's only been reauthorized five times in all of those years, and it's up for reauthorization again. But when we talk about, we talk, we keep, we've been focusing on the funding at the state level, and how everything's subject to appropriation. That's what's happening at the federal level with the Individuals with Disability Education Act. The commitment, when it was first implemented and enacted in 1975, was that Congress promised to pay 40% of the average per pupil cost for every student who was served under this. And not only are they not fulfilling that commitment, it's actually declining in recent years. For the past, for last year, they actually funded 16% of their commitment to funding that. So, and of course, we've got the same issue that we have at the state level, where when the IDEA was first enacted, it was estimated the cost to educate a child with disabilities was twice that of other students. And so, they set that maximum federal contribution at 40% of the average per pupil expenditure. But as we all know, it costs for students with multiple disabilities more than twice of that. So, even just the basic assumptions that they had back in 1975 are now proven to not be accurate, and we're still not funding even half of what, of what they promised to us. So, for example, just to give you some numbers, the average per pupil expenditure, which they set, the federal level is set each year, was $11,666 for last year, and the funding that we're receiving this year was less than $1,760, which was about 16%. And so, I think that this is a really important issue. I think this is something we need to be advocating for. You see how slow this, the progress has been on getting the foundation budget review recommendations implemented? I mean, we're still not there, and it's been years. The National School Board Association is estimating this is a 10-year path. It's going to take us 10 years. That's what we're pushing to try and get this reauthorized and fully funded. And so, it's going to take years, and a lot of us paying attention and keeping our eye on what's going on in Congress. And I think that it's really important. So, I hope that we can continue to advocate for this. We were able to, I was able to go meet with Representative, Congressman McGovern, Moulton, Neal, and Kennedy while I was there. And we split up, and everybody, we managed to cover all of the congressional delegates from Massachusetts. And they were all very receptive, but who knows who will be in office in 10 years when we finally get to the point where we're reauthorizing. The only thing that we advocated for from Massachusetts that was not a part of what the federal agenda was for the National School Board Association was, and this is really complicated, but it was the elimination of the windfall elimination provision and the government pension offset, which I knew nothing about. I don't know if any of you know what it is, but essentially, when the, when the old age survivors and disability insurance trust funds were near bankruptcy in 1983, part of what they did to bolster the system was to add these, this windfall elimination provision and government pension offset. And it affects only 15 states, Massachusetts being one of them. But essentially, it means that public sector employees that then try to enter, no, sorry, private sector employees that then try to enter the public system, public sector program are, there's a disincentive because they lose their pension, or their spouse's benefits as well. And so, it's been a real problem, particularly in the vocational schools. And so it's been a real problem, particularly in the vocational schools and in the STEM fields, because people aren't going to want to enter a profession if it means that they're going to lose out on pension benefits. And so there's been a push in Massachusetts, at least, to repeal that government pension offset and the windfall elimination provision, now that the social security system is a little bit more stable and it's stronger. So that was what we were advocating for.
Did you meet Betsy DeVos?
So, yeah. She spoke. I didn't meet her. We were waiting, but she came in through a back door in a wheelchair. She'd had a terrible accident, and so she, she snuck in and out of a back door.
Kimmy, you were shaking your head about the windfall thing.
Yes, because we all have to sign it when we take a job in municipal governments, knowing that we have been told it will affect our social security, and you've been told.
Okay. So there'll be that offset that'll, okay.
Yeah, if you, if you collect a government pension in Massachusetts from the state, your social security will be affected.
Thank you for that.
So that was that.
So now we'll move into the...
Next show.
Rules and Policy Subcommittee Reports. And we have a couple votes that have been requested to send some policies to Rules and Policy. Do you want to describe those and make the motions?
Okay, so the first, the first thing I would like to do is explain it, and then I can make the motion. Is that okay?
Okay.
So, under the Every Student Succeeds Act, federal law was requiring school districts to make accommodations for both children of active duty military families and children of, children who have been placed in foster care. So the Federal Department of Education and the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education issued guidance in these areas. We're not required to have policies. However, having a policy would provide us with the opportunity to educate staff and the community on compliance with the law through policy guidance. It was a conversation that we had in Subcommittee this week about whether or not we thought it was necessary to have a policy. And I think that, obviously, by asking you to refer it, it's clear that we, we decided that it was an opportunity to inform the staff and the public about what those requirements are and our compliance with them. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees has outlined new policies, and they've, they're JFABE, education opportunities for military children, and JFABF, education opportunities for children in foster care. And so we would like to ask your permission to have you, to let us draft policies on those two topics. So I would like to make a motion to authorize the Rules and Policy Subcommittee to draft those policies.
Second. Okay. So there's been a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Next.
Okay, so the next vote is to refer a lot of policies. I'm going to explain them separately. So first, the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act went into effect April of 2018, and it amends state law to prohibit employment discrimination on the basis of pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions such as lactation. We're asking that you refer policies AC, which is nondiscrimination, ACA, nondiscrimination on the basis of sex, GBA, equal employment opportunity, GCF, professional staff hiring, JB, equal educational opportunity, and JFBB, school choice, so that the Rules and Policy Subcommittee can update them and add the term pregnancy or pregnancy-related condition to them. Do I need, can I do this separately, or do I need to go through all of it and take them all as one vote?
No, just make a motion to refer them all as listed.
Okay, well, because there are more.
There's what?
There are more. I only got up to JFBB.
So why don't you do the, do them all, so we can take one vote?
So JFF is actually, it's a typo, so we're not going to be voting on that.
Okay.
I'll bring the policy JJF to you to be voted on.
It's JJF?
Mm-hmm.
So it was a Scrivener's error, right?
Yeah, okay, can that be a...
I, I don't think that, I mean, the public was on notice we were going to be voting on a J policy, so...
Okay, so policy JJF is the Student Activity Accounts. It's cross-listed with policy DM, which we will be doing a first reading of tonight. It's kind of the mother document. It's, they're both titled Student Activity Accounts, but policy JJF is the shorter version, condensed version. And that, yeah, we'd like to make some changes to that, based on guidance that was given to us by the Ethics Commission Advisory Report that came out. And then, so the next batch of document, so it's policy IHAM-1, is parental notice relative to sex education. It dates back to 1997, and it has five, this is what, that one to five in parentheses, it has five letters attached to it. It's notice to parents of high school students, life skills students, seventh and eighth graders, sixth graders, and fifth graders. We'd like you to refer them to the Rules and Policy Group so that we can work on them all together with Karen Jarvis Vance and update them and bring them into this century.
Okay.
And then finally, we're asking you to refer policy IKF, graduation requirements, as we discussed earlier, so that we can discuss the history requirements for graduation. So I would move to refer all of the aforementioned policies to the Rules and Policy Subcommittee.
Second. Okay. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of that referral, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Now you have a series of first readings.
Yeah, so policy DN is the most important we wanted to talk about tonight, as well most times. It was, our current policy stated that supplies, equipment, or real estate which have no further value to the school department shall be turned over to the City Property Committee for disposition. There is no City Property Committee, and we have had no policy guidance on how to dispose of anything in the meantime. And this came to light with the Bridge Street School Library renovation. They have new furniture and equipment and books, but they don't know what they can do with the old. So we sat down with our business manager, and she helped us develop a new policy for the disposal of, of school property. And so in light of the fact that we have new furniture coming in and not a policy under which we can dispose of the old policy, I would like to ask that we waive our rules and have the first and second reading and vote tonight on just this policy.
So, so, okay, and are we going to do a first reading on DM too, or...
No, just on DN, just the school property disposal, so that we could...
Okay. So we've done a, we've just done the first reading, so would you like to make a motion to suspend our rules to allow for a motion to take a second?
Right, so I'd like to, I'd move to suspend our rules so that we could suspend our second reading and take a vote?
Yeah, suspend rules to take a second reading and vote on the same night.
Second.
Second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So now a motion would be in order to, to take a vote on second reading, if you want to make that motion.
Is, I mean, is there any discussion? Has everybody actually read the policy?
I'm assuming...
You trust me?
Run this by the chief, the procurement officer, and it complies with, you know...
This was one of the policies that Candy had actually drafted before she left.
Excellent, okay, great.
That she worked on, so, and it's pretty common practice from school district to school district, similar kind of situation.
Excellent, okay, great. So I have no concerns about it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded to take, to approve the policy now on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, great.
Moving right along, we have next, we have a first reading of policy DM that's also cross-listed as policy JJF, which you just voted to refer to us. I'd like to...
Postpone consideration on this one?
Consideration of that policy, so that we can actually look at them both together, because as I said, they're linked, they're, they're almost identical.
That's fine.
So I'd like to pull that one off. And then we would move to the first reading of policy FF, Names, Naming and Memorials. This is the policy we've been working on for six months. We have listed on here, Paul's, a first reading of policy FFA. That was the MASC's recommended policy on memorials. However, we won't be discussing that because we've decided to combine FF and FFA into one concise policy FF, Naming and Memorials. And we realized when we were working on this that we had two scenarios. We had new buildings that we needed to find a name for, and then we had groups that wanted to honor someone, and they were looking for something to name. And so this sort of incorporated both of those possibilities without being overly prescriptive, and it kept the focus on, we felt, on learning and on unifying the community. So there are a couple typos that I'm sure Howard's going to point out to us, but I would move, oh, no, we don't have to move anything. This is a first reading, so...
Yeah, do, does anybody have any, I mean, again, this, this reason it took so long for us to come up with is because we had a number of concerns we tried to address in a variety of different ways, in terms of making sure that our names are reflective and welcoming to all of our students and all the families in Northampton. A concern about, in fact, there's a limited number of big buildings, and then the, and wanting to make sure that, so you don't have sort of any races involved about naming things, and at the same time, making sure that any naming is actually an honor and not, doesn't become trivialized as you're seeking things to name after someone. And so it was sort of like, looking ahead, a lot of this was looking ahead and saying, you know, in 30 or 40 years, we might have to draw a line, and it'd be better if we drew, drew the line now and made a clearer statement of sort of what should be named, how, in which direction. So this is where we ended up, but there's been plenty of discussion, is all I can assure you of.
So if you had to describe where you ended up, just for the public...
Yeah, so where we ended up was that with things that we, the school committee, think need a name, we will appoint an advisory committee which will recommend a name for us, and hopefully taking into account all those factors of, you know, the, you know, the gravitas we hope to be associated with, as well as the, you know, being welcoming and inclusive to all the people in the town. And then, you know, we made a big change from the current policy, which is it would be put on the agenda for a meeting and have a vote, as opposed to a long, drawn-out process.
Six months.
Then the other thing is when people, when, we really recognize that people want to honor people, or perhaps commemorate events, there are a number of things which people would really like to do that with. And, and again, it seemed like a much clearer and more straightforward line to simply say that the buildings and the facilities, we won't use that way. Instead, people can, really, as creative as they want to be in terms of things, I think we did a list of, for example, trees, scholarships, endowed lectures, or performances, but another suggestion that came up was purchasing books, or, you know, any of a number of things which you can think of that are things which would be, you know, an enhancement for the school and for the students, and also, you know, a memorial or commemoration that will last for a long time in our community. So that's, that's our hope, that that strikes the appropriate balance.
And we did consider, well, that was another issue when we talk about a memorial, the issue of, of counselors saying, like, that it's actually not healthy for kids to be surrounded by memorials, you know, actual plaques and...
Grave stones.
Grave stones, essentially, and that's not what a school is for. And so we were trying to think of ways to honor someone without having that, that sort of physical plaque or memorial, like, or gravestone, or any sort of structure like that, so that we could keep the focus on learning and still offer opportunities to honor people who are important to the community.
Does anyone have any questions about the policy on first reading, or any suggestions or issues? Yes.
I think you did a great job taking all the advice of the committee, and thank you, because I know it wasn't easy.
Excellent. I think we should name this rule after you.
I think, I think this was actually Mr. Moore's final version, mine was like a few pages.
The Moore Rule.
More is less, less is more.
How many buildings can you name for one school committee member? What's that? Okay.
So that was a first reading.
Okay.
And we'll put it on for a second reading and vote next month. We will not be doing a first reading of policy GBEBD, which is a new policy. We don't have one, but the MASC had recommended policy GBEBD, online fundraising and solicitations, crowdfunding. I'm going insane. And we're going to continue working on that. We, we did not get to a place we were happy with that policy in our meeting on Monday.
How fast can you say those letters together?
Pretty fast. Next, we have a first reading of policy IHAMB, Teaching About Alcohol and Drugs. This is a new policy, one that we didn't have. It's based primarily on the sample policy provided by the MASC. We did make a couple of changes to it, but it is governed, most of the information in the policy is governed by Massachusetts general law, Chapter 71, Section 1, and Chapter 71, Section 96. And we also updated the cross-reference of JICH to reflect our recently adopted alcohol, tobacco, and drug use prohibited policy. So I don't know if anyone has any questions, or if there's any discussion about this one.
Questions about this one on first reading? Okay, so I think everyone's satisfied with that one on first reading. Next in the IH series.
Okay, so, yeah, last up is, it was supposed to be a first reading of policy IHAE, IHAM, which is cross dual-listed, really. We are not going to be addressing that tonight. The MASC recommends removing it entirely from the policy manual and including the information in ADF Wellness, which we had referred to the Health Advisory Committee to work on. And we had also in Subcommittee talked about if we are keeping this, that we should align it with the other policies that we just asked you to refer to us, all of those parental letters home that are IHAMS. And so in any case, we are not ready to have a first reading on that policy because we're not entirely sure still where it's going.
Okay.
So that's my report.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Fallon and the committee, for your work. Now we move to the business manager's report, and followed by the personnel report.
So included in your packet was a business report. The first item in the business report is the fiscal '19 appropriation report that is through February 8th. There are a few accounts that have a deficit balance showing on the report at the moment, the legal services, student negotiations this year, special education contracted services, long-term sub, translations with the transfer that you did earlier this evening, vacation buyback, and instructional software and maintenance are in the middle of preparing their transfers right now, so that way we'll be updating those accounts. So that information, if there's any questions you have on that report, I'd be glad to answer them. The second item I have in the business report are the gifts from the PTO that are $1,000 or less. We've received actually 10 gifts from the JFK PTO totaling $5,455.05, ranging from $285. The smallest one actually was $120, up to $1,000 for the 10 gifts. And the item I have also in the report is the end-of-year audit report, which is ending for June 30th, 2018. Part of the process the Department of Ed requires is that we have an independent auditor for our normal city auditors actually do that for us. They came in in December, reviewed the items, prepared the report. They noted a couple items that were reported on incorrect lines, so those corrections have been submitted to the Department of Ed already. So I wanted to make sure you had that copy of that report. I'm not sure if you're using Go to Accept it, or whether you just have the information to review it. And the last item I have are the two warrants that your representative have signed during the month of January.
Any questions about the report this evening? The report? Okay, I'm hearing none, then we'll move right into the superintendent reports. Oh, I'm sorry, personnel report.
Personnel report.
Personnel report.
Sorry.
We have here, we have seven new hires during January. We had three ESPs, three custodians, and one administrative assistant. Those were all replacements. There weren't new positions. We had three separations, and we had two transfers of ESPs.
Excellent. Now we can move into the superintendent's report.
Thank you. It's really interesting how many of the themes that came out during discussion tonight are sort of tied up in the superintendent's report, and there are visuals. So let me start by passing this out. So if March comes in like a lion and goes out like a lamb, February came in with the district review, and will go out with the first view budget. I'd like to thank everybody who helped or participated in the district review process. While it will be several months before we receive our district review report, we heard many positive comments on the preparation, organization, and high level of enthusiastic participation that was evident, both before and during the review. As I shared earlier, in an earlier communication, the review team reported that we had participation from more stakeholders of every type of stakeholder that there is in a district than many of them had ever seen before, including those who had done the process in much larger districts. For those of you who accessed the public version of our document submission package, you know that we engaged in a thorough and very open self-study process. All told, we submitted more than 1,100 documents prior to the review, and an additional number of documents that the team requested while they were on site. What is not so obvious is the work that went on behind the scenes, and I'd like to share a little bit of that with you as a way of recognizing the dedication and even the forbearance that some of my staff showed throughout the process. In the beginning, we decided to allot one day for document production for each indicator. And we had, I had programmed many score of daily instructions that went out to the ALT team every morning at 8:00 a.m. It'd say something like, "This is Indicator 1. This is lesson plans. I need you to get all your lesson plans and submit them to me by the end of the day." Every morning, there would be another email that came out. So the messages started going out in late August and continued through October 19. And I can tell you that those morning messages were not as eagerly anticipated as my snow calls, but the team got the job done with very limited grumbling. Logging in more than five hours of interviews during the onsite visits, Dr. Cheever took the prize for time on task. However, the most unsung hero of the whole process was Tracy Harity. Anyone who's been to the central office over the past several months will have seen the District Review Command Center, which you have a picture of in front of you. Our team chair bestowed on her the 2019 Efficiency Award, saying, "It comes without money, but with lots of smiles." So, with the district review behind us, we turn our attention to the FY '20 school budget. As some of you may have noticed on Facebook, the ALT team has had a number of meetings, including one where we were assisted by a therapy dog. As an ALT team, we've spent about 16 hours working on the FY '20 budget over the course of five meetings. I've also held a number of small group meetings with elementary principals, middle and high school administration, and student services, as we work out details of some of the budget concepts that were agreed to by the whole team. Kami and I met yesterday with the Budget and Property Subcommittee to go over a preliminary draft of the first view budget presentation, and so I just want to put out a notice, because it was shocking to some, that I've taken great pains to limit the number of slides in this year's presentation, but the content was sufficient to spark about two and a half hours of really satisfying discussion on our next strategic moves to improve the schools. So, we'll be adding a few slides, if not too many. I look forward to sharing those ideas with you in a couple of weeks. Finally, I wanted to share some information that I'll be discussing tomorrow morning with our local legislative delegation. Actually, I'll be meeting with representatives and senators from all the CES member districts, as well as some from Worcester County, and some from Hampden County as well. And, much like the issue of the unfunded promise of IDEA, we'll be talking about some of the unfunded promises in the state budget. So, I just wanted to share this with you for informational purposes. It's an area where we are focusing our advocacy. It is consistent with what MASSE is doing, and their advocacy around the foundation budget review. So in addition to advocating for an accelerated process, rather than the seven-year phase in, for reasons that I explained when I showed you what I think the likely outcome of a seven-year phase in is, which is likely to be zero money for Northampton, we're also focusing on the other unfunded, or underfunded programs within the state budget. So, specifically looking at charter school reimbursement, circuit breaker, regional transportation, and homeless transportation. These are underfunded programs that affect just about all of the CES member districts. You can see Northampton's total at the bottom of Page 1. I will say that this is a conservative estimate, because there are a couple of ways to calculate the charter school reimbursement underpayment, and we took the more conservative approach, meaning the approach that minimizes the amount of the underpayment. For those of you who don't have this document in front of you, it's $215,277 for Northampton. All the CES member districts combined is an amount of $3.9 million. This is based on FY '18 numbers. So, part of the advocacy in the session that I'll be leading tomorrow is focused on not taking our eyes off of the other underfunded programs, even while we try to get some movement on the Chapter 70 underfunded program. And I think the mayor's budget presentation makes it clear why that's so important. As you pointed out, in the governor's budget proposal, there's actually a net cut in state aid for education to Northampton. There's a $56,000 increase in Chapter 70, but that goes along with a $121,000 reduction for charter school reimbursement. So I'll be, and that's on top of a number that's already not fully funded. So, that's what I'll be doing tomorrow morning, and in the next few weeks, is I put the final touches on my first view budget presentation. I do think it's going to be a very positive presentation. I'm really happy that some things worked out, and some things that I think we'll be able to do for the district next year. I think it's really, was really sort of satisfying to have the district review happening while we were working on the first view budget, because it felt like we were getting some confirmation, not that any information's been shared, but it just felt like we were getting some confirmation that some of the concepts we were working on for the budget are likely to be the right concepts for Northampton. So, that's my report.
Thank you very much. So, we have some future business and meeting dates. We have the negotiating Subcommittee, February 27, 5:00 p.m. at the JFK Cafeteria. We've got the school committee's first sort of kickoff budget meeting, February 28, 2019, and that's where the superintendent will present the first view. That's at 6:45 p.m. in the JFK Community Room. I did want to note that one of our members will be out of state that day, but we are going to have, we are going to use the laws, open meeting laws ability to do a remote participation. So we'll have a cardboard cutout of Ms. Boss, and we'll have a speakerphone there, and so she will be participating, and hopefully following along by watching the live stream at home of the presentation, but we may, we'll be able to give her the slides maybe in advance, just in case the tech doesn't work. So that'll be kind of a first for us. And school committee meeting of March 14, 2019, at 6:45 in the JFK Community Room, and then the second meeting in March for the school committee budget meeting, March 28, 2019, 6:45 p.m. in the JFK Community Room. So, if there's nothing else, I would ask for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So that does conclude the school committee meeting of February 14, 2019.